You know, the budgeting issue, it's okay.
I knew there was something.
Did I win a prize?
I'd like to call the regular planning commission meeting, Oak Harbor Planning Commission meeting to order. It would be June 28, 2016. Let the record show the roll call that Commissioner Peterson is not present this evening. Item on the agenda, approval of the minutes of May 24, 2016. We have a motion.
I would like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from the meeting May 24, 2016, as presented.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Abstain.
Okay. We allow 15 minutes for any item that might come forth that's not on the printed agenda. Do I have anyone in the audience hearing to take the mic and discuss anything? Seeing none, I'll close this part of the meeting. The next item is the impact fee deferral code amendment. It is a public hearing, and Senior Planner Dennis Lefebvre will take that for us, correct?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, members of the commission. Under the Growth Management Act, which was passed by the state of Washington in 1990, impact fees were authorized for jurisdictions planning under the act.
How about impact fee first? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking at medical marijuana.
Oh, yeah, I don't have a PowerPoint, so disregard the one.
You said impact fees, I'm looking at medical marijuana, and I'm hearing you say medical marijuana instead of impact.
Impact fees.
Yes.
With that authorization, the city of Oak Harbor moved forward, and by an ordinance in May of 1996, created an impact fee for parks, and in September of 1997, created an impact fee for transportation. And basically, what an impact fee is, it's an assessment on new development that helps offset some of the costs that the local jurisdiction feels from the impact of that development on public facilities. And again, public facilities can include streets and roads, parks, schools, emergency services such as fire can collect impact fees, and that's all authorized under the Growth Management Act. It's important to note that the impact fees that the city of Oak Harbor created for transportation in parks have been codified in our chapter 3.63 of our municipal code. And the timing for the collection of our impact fees is at the time of building permit issuance, when a developer comes in, wants to pull a building permit for their construction or project, that's the time that we assess them for the impact fees. With the state intent of trying to promote economic recovery of the construction industry the last few years, it's kind of hit a lull, they passed last year in gross Senate Bill 5923, which, in a sense, is any jurisdiction that has implemented a program for impact fees must also create inside that program an option for the developer to create a deferred impact fee program. So, the act gives a local jurisdiction, and that's a requirement, we have to have this done by September 1 of this year, and we're moving forward with that. The act gives us a little bit of flexibility, and it gives us some things that we need to include in our code. One of the things that was a little bit flexible, actually two things in the act that were flexible for us, was the option of when we defer that impact fee collection to. The act calls out three specific times that we can look at. One is upon final inspection. The other option is upon certificate of occupancy, when the developer comes in and is ready to actually have somebody live in the structure. And also at the time of closing of the first sale of the property. So, looking at those three options, we had a meeting among staff with the legal department, finance department, or building department, as well as development services, and discussed these three options that we could look at as deferring those impact fees till. And the third one that was at the time of closing seemed to be a little fuzzy for our finance department as to when and who to actually collect the impact fees from. So, we decided to go with the first two, upon the final inspection or the issuance of the certificate of occupancy as options for an applicant for the deferment of the impact fees. The other one that was somewhat flexible in the act was whether we, as a jurisdiction, would set up an administrative fee. We were allowed through the act to do that. Some of the not-so-flexible issues were the deferment of the impact fees could not extend past 18 months. We've included that in our ordinance. A developer may not apply for deferred impact fee for more than 20 single-family units, and I didn't mention this at the top, this is only applicable to single-family attached and detached residences, new construction. Doesn't apply to commercial, doesn't apply to impact fees for industrial structures, only single-family. But they can only be permitted at 20 applications for deferment within the calendar year. So, with that, the other thing that was mandatory as part of the act, and it's a good thing for the city, it protects us from developers who actually walk away during the process, but we are able to, developer must form a lien for the property in favor of the city of Oak Harbor, and that lien can be collected when we receive the impact fees. So, that's a little protection for us through the course of the deferment. That's basically what we are looking at as far as the amendment, we are proposing the amendment to our chapter 3.63. It does deal with all of the aspects of the act, and we would be in conformance upon approval of this. The ordinance is 17.72, part of your packet. The resolution that's part of your packet is for the amendment to the master fee schedule. We are looking at a fairly fair and reasonable fee for the processing of this deferment application. Procedurally, with the code amendment, the planning commission makes a recommendation, and that's carried forward to the city council. We are planning to take this to the city council at their workshop in July, and then have it approved at their August 3 meeting, which beats the September 1 deadline mandated by the state. So, with that, I will conclude my presentation and be happy to answer any questions.
Should I open the hearing at this time? I will open the hearing and take any input or...
I have no questions.
I have a couple of questions, and I guess I was struggling with this a little bit from the standpoint, up on Port Nugent, there was a townhome community that was, the infrastructure was built, and I want to say it's been like eight or 10 years ago, but the properties were never developed. If that same scenario was to happen with this in place, how does the city, I know, you explained that it gets, it can initiate a lien to be first in line, but I believe this particular parcel of property that I'm talking about, this development, has gone through several owners and several bankruptcies, and is now owned by an LLC that's overseas. How do you get in line with something like that, should that occur?
Is it undeveloped? I didn't quite understand.
The infrastructure's in, electrical, water, sewer, telephone cables, sidewalks, everything.
Well, but there's no structures on the lots?
There's no structures.
Okay. Once there would be a proposal to develop actual housing units on the individual parcels, with this in place, upon final inspection or certificate of occupancy of each individual structure, this could come into play if the developer applied for this deferment. If the final plat's already in place, that's one thing, and then the next piece then is actually to have the structures developed. So, it would come into play at that point in time. So, we wouldn't be exposed as a city because our, in your particular example, because no building permits had been issued yet? So, really what this is, you know, someone has decided that they think there's the market for that particular home, and they've been issued the building.
I always just think from the standpoint, okay, the impact to the traffic, the impact to the roads, and the impact to everything, you know, to build the infrastructure was put in. So, the city bore the cost of the impact on the highway system and transportation system and all that, but yet we're still out there with nothing. I just want to make sure it didn't happen.
So, typically, the historical way to look at that is that the impact is created at the time that the building permit is issued, even though technically and actually that impact doesn't really take place until such time as that home is occupied, right? And so, I think that's in part why we see this process being put into the state law and then into the city code. So, even though that plat has been developed, and those lots are ready for building, there's no impact to the park system, there's no impact to the street system until we have residents living there.
Okay.
And so, while we have picked up a nominal additional amount of maintenance and public service to that vacant property, we haven't come anywhere close to the responsibilities that we have once they have homes there.
Okay.
Any other comments?
Currently, are we getting all of the fees right up front?
Our current code allows or requires the collection of impact fees actually at two points in time, but one is never used. The first is that developer subdivision can pay it at the time of the approval of the subdivision. So, let's say you're processing a 40-lot plat, you can choose to pay all of those impact fees at the time that subdivision took place. Perhaps not strange to you, that doesn't take place very often. The other place it gets collected is at the time of the issuance of the building permit.
Okay.
Right? And so, and that's where, you know, probably 95% of the communities were already, is at that point in time.
And this is just another option, so they could still pay?
They still can.
Yeah.
And in fact, at the staff level, we think that folks may actually still choose that option, because by the time they, you know, file the lien, get it recorded, come back to provide us the proof of it, and then, you know, have to go through the process to have the lien released.
Which they have to pay for, too.
Which they have to pay for. That may actually be more trouble than it's worth. And so, depending upon that particular builder and the market that they're trying to hit, they may just continue to do it as business as usual.
But we're just required to now provide another option?
We're required to provide that option for them. And if we think about the development pattern in Oak Harbor, while it's changing just a little bit, we don't normally see a lot of spec homes being done. They build them when they have a buyer. And so, in that case, it's pretty easy to see just the regular system working, but if someone is doing a lot of spec homes, they may want to take advantage of this process.
It is a public hearing, there is a member in the audience, do you care to share anything with us, do you have any questions?
No, I don't, I fear so. I'll have to have Randall.
Any other comments, questions? Can you entertain a motion?
I move to recommend to the city council approval of ordinance number 1772, amending Oak Harbor Municipal Code, Chapter 3.63, comma, impact fees. I'll second the motion.
Motion's made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? I will close the public hearing.
We've got one more, one more motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I move to recommend to the city council approval of Resolution Number 16-20, amending the city of Oak Harbor's Schedule A master fee schedule.
I second.
Motion's made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? Motion passes, and now I will close the public hearing. Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you, Commissioner. Would you like to talk about medical marijuana?
I will.
So, the next item on the agenda this evening is Marijuana-Related Uses Code Amendment, and once again, we will hear from Senior Planner Dennis Lefebvre.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And again, welcome commissioners. We are taking this medical marijuana step, one step further. We've had numerous discussions with this body in the past regarding what some of our options were, we discussed the ordinances for the moratoriums, and now we're at the point where we think we know what is coming out of the 50-52 law that was passed last year by the state. Things are getting clearer as we move forward, so we felt we were able to make an amendment to our code to address what we see coming forward in time, so that we wouldn't have to extend the moratorium again, which was done, I think is up in September 1 of this year. So, what I'd like to do is just kind of rehash things as far as where we stand, what brought us to this point, what we're looking at doing and proposing, and then I do have some graphics at the end that kind of illustrate what we're proposing as far as the code is concerned. So, as a brief background, we're all aware that in November of 2012, the state, through an initiative 502, passed or legalized recreational marijuana. Along with that came a pretty substantial regulatory framework that was put in place for the recreational industry in the state. Following that state movement, the city of Oak Harbor actually created Chapter 19.22 in our municipal code, and that was adopted in February of 2014. That established some criteria and restrictions for the citing of recreational producers, processors, and retailers in the city. Waiting for the state to take action on the medical marijuana industry, we passed a series of ordinances starting, I think shortly, well, actually shortly after I 502, I think it actually spanned the course of about two and a half years for those four ordinances, the most recent being 1740, which takes us through September 1 of this year. But fortunately, last year in April, the state did pass a pretty comprehensive medical marijuana bill, which legalized medical marijuana in the state, and also created a parallel regulatory framework to the recreational industry in the state. More of the pieces of the 50-52, or better known as the Cannabis Patient Protection Act, is that it mandated the LCB, which incidentally, through the CPPA, changed its name from the Liquor Control Board to the Liquor Cannabis Board, authorized them to take a look at the actual need in the state for medical marijuana facilities, and the accessibility to the qualifying patients in the state to make sure that there was enough licenses to go around and to meet the need. Well, LCB came back and said, "Well, no, we're actually kind of short in the state," so they increased the license numbers by about 222 statewide, and allocated those to the different jurisdictions, cities and counties, and the city of Oak Harbor had one more license attributed to the city. It also authorized the Department of Health to create the authorization database, which qualifying patients must register in in order to get the registration card to go in and access medical marijuana. It also gives them, through that authorization, some legal protection from prosecution, because technically marijuana is still illegal federally. As of Friday, collective gardens will be no longer a permitted use anywhere, and they will be replaced with what is termed cooperatives. They're the, no more than four member of qualifying patients may form a cooperative. That will be in effect July 1. And I'll talk more about cooperatives in just a minute. The Department of Health also created an endorsement program, so that existing medical retailers could be endorsed to also sell medical marijuana through the same store, which is actually a pretty big step, because it allows existing retailers to do the medical marijuana, which also means that there won't be any individual medical marijuana sites being promoted in the city. The other kind of issue that dovetailed with that same medical endorsement was the creation or the recommendation in the act of the Department of Health. They were required in the act to look at specialty clinics and make a recommendation on whether citing specialty clinics would be a logical thing to do or not. My understanding of a specialty clinic is similar to a one-stop shop, where you could, a person who would qualify as a patient for medical marijuana could go in, become registered in the database by a physician who was onsite, and then actually walk away with medical marijuana, all under the same shop. While the Department of Health did not make that recommendation to create specialty clinics simply because there was major federal implications as far as malpractice is concerned, as well as the illegality of a physician selling a substance, a controlled substance, one is what it's considered, they're not authorized to do that. So, that aspect is shot down, which kind of plays into the fact of the previous one with the medical endorsement, because it's not quite the one-stop shop, but it does allow the retailers to do both medical and recreational. As far as local conditions are concerned, as I mentioned, we do have the two licenses that were available. We did have two recreational marijuana shops apply for those licenses and receive those licenses in conformance with our code and in the restrictions that were required as part of our code. Both of those retailers have been medically endorsed. So, what picture that paints for us is that there are no licenses available for the city of Oak Harbor for either recreational or medical marijuana. Those have been utilized, they're in place, and the shops will be available as of July 1 to sell medical marijuana. What we are proposing in our code is that we deal with the medical marijuana retailers, producers, and processors, similar to how we dealt with the recreational aspects of all three users, the producers, processors, and retailers. We have the restrictions as far as zones are concerned, the producers and processors are only allowed in the planned industrial park zone and industrial zones, and the medical retailers would only be allowed in the C4, which is the Highway Service Commercial Zone, and industrial zones. Understanding also that the two licenses are already taken up, both of those existing shops are meeting that restriction that we have in our code. In addition to that, we also placed on the medical facilities in our code amendment the 1,000-foot buffers from the various sensitive areas that we've identified, actually, the existing code, which was done for recreational marijuana, identified the exact same sensitive areas and buffer widths that we have to deal with through the Cannabis Patient Protection Act. So, you know, it worked out quite well that way. So to speak, the one wild card that is still out there are the cooperatives. The restrictions that are mandated through the act are, again, the 1,000-foot buffer areas, and we'll do a little graphic in just a minute here to show what areas may be available for the cooperatives. The one thing the act requires is that these cooperatives are in the domicile housing unit of one of the participants, one of the four participants. They must be registered with the LCB, and through that registration process, the city will get notification through the mayor's office and distributed to police, fire, building, planning for review of that license application. We have 20 days to respond to the LCB, and certainly, as we review, we will look at our buffer areas for the placement of that cooperative to make sure that they're not infringing upon one of those sensitive areas, or we have the opportunity to deny that license application or registration for cooperative. So, that is the review process.
And I just can ask a question about the licenses.
Yes.
So, you said we have two active, and they're both being utilized, or we have two licenses and they're both being used, correct?
Yes.
In the background, it said that one additional license was allocated to Oak Harbor.
That was part of the LCB reallocation or additional allocations of licenses that they were required to look at, they did that earlier this year.
So, did that bring us up to two total?
That brought us up to two, yes.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, for a total of two.
If I could clarify, I think only one of the two is actually open, the one that's been on the highway.
Correct.
The second and the newest license approved, I don't believe that that's operational.
Okay, and those will both be medicinal and recreational in the same building?
Yes.
Okay.
So, with cooperatives, where are we? Well, actually, we had Ray put together a nice handy graphic that'll kind of show initially the city, the various zones, and I will not go into each zone, but the first restriction that we're going to apply are the locations of our schools and library. You can see the dim outline of the 1,000-foot radius around those facilities, and they are around the perimeter of each facility, it's not from the center, it's measured from each of the points on the perimeter of each one of those sites. The next one that we look at are childcare centers, and I think the Lone Arcade that's located at the bowling alley, actually, are identified in red, and then again, the dim outline for the 1,000-foot radius. We also add in city parks, which are shown in red, except for that big piece of red that's along Highway 20 up there, that's actually a zone, but the smaller blocked areas are the city parks, they have a 1,000-foot radius around them. And then finally, the act requires that the existing retailers have a buffer of one mile from any cooperative, actually, a cooperative cannot be cited within one mile of an existing retailer. So, that essentially leaves that area as the potential citing area for a cooperative.
A person has to live there.
It has to be in the domicile of one of the registered participants of the cooperative. So, that's the area that is left. And in the code amendment to Chapter 19.22, that is in your packet, we are not promoting any additional restrictions on this at this point in time. It should be noted, too, that the MRSC did an analysis, and while they said a local jurisdiction couldn't put any restrictions on an individual qualifying patient to... couldn't put any restrictions on an individual qualifying patient to growing their own medical marijuana at their home, we could look at additional restrictions to cooperatives. So that option is still available to us, however, we felt that there isn't a whole lot of land available for cooperatives, so...
Could we be subject to, it appears that we're almost to the point where there isn't a lot of option. Is that going to cause us a problem?
It doesn't appear to be, and in discussions with staff, it didn't seem like there was...
I know the question you're asking, and, no, because we're applying the state standards here. So since we're not suggesting any local additional standards, we're applying the state law, and the area that's left is the area that's left.
Thank you. So that is how we've amended our code to address medical marijuana. That amended code is before you tonight. This is the public hearing, to move that forward with your recommendation.
I have another quick question. Is it possible that they could, in the future, change those restrictions, the state? Is that poss, I mean...
Well, in a sense, they already have. I mean, there was another bill that was passed, oh, late summer of last year, that allowed jurisdictions to reduce that thousand feet to no less than one hundred feet. So, you know, they always have that opportunity.
The last part of the map that you removed, was it a thousand feet from any existing retailer?
One mile.
One mile, within any existing retailer.
Yes.
Licensed retailer.
Yes.
Of which there are two, in Oak Harbor.
I was understanding, like, any business, but you're actually talking about the existing facilities. Okay, I was trying to figure out what...
No, no.
Okay.
No, we leave a whole lot at all.
I was trying to follow along with that.
No, that's fine.
Any medical or any recreational marijuana retailer has the mile radius around.
So I noticed that Fairway Point is one of the areas where it'd be permitted, but there's at least two community parks within Fairway Point, are those owned by Fairway Point and not by the city?
Those are not, those are not public parks, they are, they are private recreational or park areas that are part of Fairway Point.
So even though one of them is specifically designed for toddlers?
Yeah.
It doesn't apply?
It doesn't, no. We're only allowed to apply that standard to public parks. There was some conversation when we first went through recreational regulation, back and forth, as to, does it apply to private parks as well, because that initially was unclear? And my recollection was, is that the Liquor Control Board provided direction on that, that it only applied to public parks.
Thank you.
So the cooperatives are replacing the collaborative gardens?
Collective gardens, yes.
Collective gardens. How, were, did any of those even exist? Not here in Oak Harbor, but, you know, in other areas?
I don't know of any.
Not, well, as you say, we're not aware of any here in Oak Harbor. As you know, we had that moratorium in place, but they certainly did exist in other communities. And so, but thankfully for us, it's not something where we have to roll back the hands of time on, because to the best of our knowledge, we've never had any that were formed under that previous legislation.
One other question that I had was, if we find that a cooperative's been established, and let's say there is a vacant commercial space near that area that a recreational facility would want to occupy, would we then have to tell that recreational facility that they cannot occupy that space because they'd be within one mile of the...
No. No.
It only goes, it only goes the first way.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So the classic example of that is in communities where there's a spacing requirement between places that sell alcohol and churches, right? You know, one way you have to meet the standard, the other way, you don't.
Okay.
Yeah.
This is also a public hearing, you need to open the public hearing at this time, and solicit any input that might come from the audience, citizens. Commissioners have any other questions of Dennis or Steve?
No.
If not, I would entertain a motion at this time.
I move to recommend to the city council approval of ordinance number seventeen seventy-three, amending Oak Harbor Municipal Code, Chapter nineteen point twenty-two, marijuana-related uses.
I second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That being the last item on the agenda this evening, I call a meeting adjourned.
Thank you for your work, and again, thank you for coming out and doing the sunny day for Oak Harbor's leg.
That was almost a record.
Nice, quick meeting.